Okay, it's now one time to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Booth, if you'd do this in tonight's prayer?
Thank you. Dear Lord, please help us with the wisdom and guidance that we need to make the correct decisions for the folks of Nelsonville. And lead us in that path. Amen.
Amen. All right, then, call the hall, please.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Taylor from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting? Any council discussion on said minutes? Okay, motion to adopt? Okay. Pause.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Okay, auditor slash treasurer's report. It's exercise for you, Taylor.
Yeah, that would make sense. Put some squats. Good evening, council. Thank you so much for having me. The, we'll start with the treasurer's report, which should be on everybody's tabletop. This is the treasurer's report for April two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Mullane works at this time, as you know. So you'll see he's highlighted on page one, the balance of all funds between the sweep account and what is essentially our sort of investment account. On the next page, interest year-to-date, five oh seven thirty-seven. From the interest, I'm sorry, the investment account. On the next page, you'll see bank rate conciliation, where he goes through the statements, categorizes expenses and revenues for everybody, in and out of the bank accounts. Less outstanding, you'll see at the bottom. And on the next page, you will see, starting with the beginning book balance, ending with the end book balance. When you take revenues and expenses from both, you get a difference of zero. You'll see on the last page, and I don't believe, just look real quick, I don't believe he had any adjustments. There is just one difference, and I'm looking for the number, and it is, there it is. He did count it as an adjustment. At the bottom of the final page, eleven thousand four hundred thirty-five eighteen, that is the difference for the property tax check. We have to report the amount that county auditor or treasurer collected total, and then we have to report out as expenses, their fees. So even though it touches our bank account, we have to report as if it came in and went out same day, governmental accounting. So that's the treasurer's report. Auditor's report I'll have on the screen for everybody, as well as it's online, I'm sorry, available online, and at the auditor's tab, as well as in your emails. This is the auditor's report for April two thousand twenty-two. I gotta get new glasses. City's revenues outpaced expenses for the first time for the year, revenues of eight hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighteen cents, expenses of three hundred thirty-nine thousand fifty-four dollars thirty-one cents. The very large difference this month is property taxes came in, which is a check of almost three hundred thousand, as well as income tax month. So this is the month we bring in, although it's not substantially more than most other months, it's about double, but it's a notable month. Income tax deadline was the eighteenth of April. I just say here, that's a difference from the first three months, where expenses outpaced revenues. Let's see if I can't get this to go. Major fund balances, you'll see all funds combined. General fund got its property tax and income tax, so this is its best month. And then will likely trickle down towards the end of the month, although hopefully, of course, higher than last year. Combined street funds, four sixty-seven, and some change. Capital fund still waiting on a hundred fifty thousand from AEP, so it's really just over two hundred thousand. Water fund crossing at seven digits, which would be healthy status for it, and sewer fund at about half that, five hundred thousand, one, two, three ninety-five. This is always kind of hard to read on the screen. Think I've tried to get it to come up before, but this is the statement of cash balances, month-to-date totals. In your guys' emails, there's a cop, there's an attachment of this, as well as online, where you can see the different fund balances, revenues in, revenues out, that confirm those numbers I just read to you. Only notable thing is we have a negative encumbrance. This is going to be the most boring fact for you guys today. Negative encumbrance in the street funds, which is impossible. It's technically like encumbering an additional amount. Encumber means to set aside to spend, so you can't really set aside to spend a negative amount, because that would mean you're taking in money. And the reason that is, is because of the negative posting for the property taxes. So even though we brought in property taxes, we had the expense out, and we just didn't have it posted yet by the end of the month. So, curious thing for any of the accountants in the room, it just looks funny, that's all. And here's our credit card report. I'll quickly read through the highlights. We discussed Navtech, a small charge last month. Thousand dollars to Tunnels and Towers, the city's grant sponsorship to the event. This charge, Best Western Hilliard, is for the police chief's stay for training in Hilliard. Galls Rockies, galls Rockies, uniforms, uniforms. This last three charges indeed is job posting, so job ads for several jobs around City Hall. You'll see that for the next few months. Support PDF filler is a tool we use for documents, legal documents, and Microsoft is all of our emails, storage, et cetera. And I really just wanted to give brief updates. Utility billing upgrades are on track for later this summer. It is moving at a good pace. We've had several meetings and set up some responsibilities in the office. Well, who's going to do what? That means we're going to have everything on one system, including work orders, which can be mobile, and then also citizens will be able to access their usage at home, as well as businesses. Council has been sent a link, if you haven't, I'll resend it, where you guys can test it for us, tell us if you see any problems, because you're our beta testers. And income tax season ended in April. We saw a much larger number of refunds, including a four-digit request today. This is due to remote work processes and the state house doing absolutely no favors for us since the beginning of time. And then, but revenue is currently meeting expectations, so refunds up a little bit, revenue is meeting the plan, and that's really it. Questions, thoughts, concerns? I saw this story in Athens about how they were having to give back several hundreds of thousands of dollars in refunds for stay-home workers. How much has that affected us? It is not hundreds of thousands, thank goodness. So currently, we usually write just like thousand or two dollars in refunds. We don't write a large number. We're pushing closer to twenty thousand this year, so it's still not like existential territory, but it's notable. And it's way more than we budgeted for, because we didn't anticipate this law change, or at least that so many folks would take advantage of it. The last problem, or the last step of this process will be the folks who extended their tax deadline from April eighteenth to October, usually for more time to file, because usually bigger filers are bigger numbers. And I worry about some of our large employers and those folks, and whether a large number of refunds will come through in October. I don't anticipate more than twenty thousand, but I could see it being another twenty possibly at an maximum. So again, we're talking about, for the general fund and capital improvement, not an existential problem, but a costly issue. We get nothing for it. Have to go for it next year in the budget. More than likely. And the bigger concern, I've been working closely with, I can't remember if I CCG on that email today, Scott, but I've been working with our larger employers, trying to make sure, I know you make changes to this day-to-day withholdings, so in other words, if it starts impacting us this tax year instead of last tax year, I want to know right away. I think I've annoyed more than one HR person, but if, if they're all of a sudden going to stop withholding for their employees who are scattered all over the place, I want to know as quickly as possible. They're not under any requirement to tell me, but you know, the email's there, they're usually the phone. If that makes sense. Okay. Any other questions? This is a boring one, I know. Boring's good, numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thanks, David.
Motion to approve the auditor slash treasurer's report?
Submit. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, mayor's court report, you guys all got it in your email, but I can go ahead and read it. The total to city cash flow for May twenty twenty-two is twenty-six ninety-five. Year-to-date, twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-one. Of course, state revenue is one thousand dollars and twenty, one thousand twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. Year-to-date, three thousand four hundred and twenty-three fifty. We are down from last year. There's extenuating circumstances with a lot of that stuff. A lot of people are unable to pay, and it's not that the police have stopped writing tickets or anything like that, it's just that we have a lot of community service that's been done. And, you know, you can't get blood out of a turn, so, you know, rather than piling stuff on people and making it worse for them, and worse, 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 we do, we do a lot of community service, so. How is that working out? Mr. Frank? Has people been showing up, or have they?
We had the young lady one last time. Wasn't she the one that had community service last time?
I think so. Did she, but they have been showing up?
The young lady did her time.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right. Citizens comments?
That's great.
That's you.
Well, I'm Abby Fannin. I, we have the flower business on the end of town over there, and I hate to bring this to everybody's attention, but I have been trying to reach out. I have, there's an issue with one of the people who live near us. They, their house has been condemned since June of last year, and it's just progressively gotten worse, and to the effect that there's a smell now, so when I'm trying to, you know, make a living, there's people who are coming to my house, and like, it's, it's just clear. And I'm not really sure where else to go, but I know that our code enforcer is no longer with us, and I know that you guys are, and you guys have your hands full, you know, I, I can see it. But I really am trying to, you know, make things look better in Nelsonville. I want to bring in a money to the town, and I just, I can't really like live with this any longer.
Is that the property with all the cars?
Yes.
We got it. We'll get it.
Okay.
No one she's talking about?
Yes. Okay, because
We'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate it. I don't mean to, you know.
No, no, no.
You're good. I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah. Okay, that, that's all I have.
No problem.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
It's been on my to-do list, and you just have moved it to the top, and that's, that's quite okay, so it'll be a fun distraction.
Well, I'm here to serve, so.
Thank you, Ms. Fannin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're fine. Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys. You gonna stay here with your new friend?
Hey, girl, off the gag order.
Yep, free now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any business and organizational comments? Nope. Okay, committee discussions?
We had a finance meeting where we discussed a couple of fire and police issues. We need to schedule a follow-up police and fire committee meeting this week, so.
Okay.
Whenever you guys are available, we can set that up.
Yeah, whenever, doesn't matter. Ask Mr. Smith and see when he's available.
Any evening except for two, yeah, tomorrow, any evening except for tomorrow.
Okay. Whenever, Justin, just let Scott know.
Yeah, I'll send out the email. What's good for you? Let me ask you that, yeah.
Well, I was actually just talking to Harry before we came in here.
Okay.
And maybe real quick, when we're done, I want to run something by you, possibly next week.
Okay.
Just because there's a couple of questions to be asked from the county first.
So we need some time to research.
Yes.
Okay, I, I will be out of town next week.
Okay, never mind, we'll do it, how about Thursday?
Thursday good with you guys?
So. You're already, what about it?
Six.
Turn the morning. Turn the morning, perfect.
Some of it's going to work.
Is that what you call it?
That's what I tell my guys.
Right.
Okay, any more committee discussions? Nope, okay. All right, department updates. Who do we have first? Mr. or Chief Fitch, if you would, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, you need to use a lectern, I like that.
Good evening, council.
And good evening to you.
Not even a spin-up, my lord. Tony went through the mayor's court. Using that same program, I just wanted to give you guys kind of an update. Since our last meeting, I successfully completed the forty-hour now state mandated training for all chiefs of police to go through. I drug my feet on it as long as I could, but it is now completed and official, so that's one more thing we're in compliance with. I also have, we have some, you know, obviously some new members of the police department. I want to commend them on the job they're doing. I literally have had more compliments in the last four to six weeks from the general public than I've had previously, and I'm, you know, they was continuously growing, but the guys I'm going out with them, I've been working most evenings for the past few weeks, and they're just naturally professional. They're treating people with respect. They're going that extra mile. They're doing all the little things, and I think council wants them to do, and I certainly do. I'm very proud of them. They're gaining experience each and every day, so I only look for that to continue, and as they gain more experience, just be more independent in the way they're doing it. The way the, the shifts are scheduled, we're overlapping and have more road coverage per shift. We average now two and a half officers per shift out, and I say half because we got one that works at twelve to twelve. So we're averaging two and a half cruisers out a shift, which has obviously helped with officer safety, proactiveness as opposed to being reactive. We've also really started, I really implemented with these new guys, is a good opportunity to do for community policing, community-style policing. We're getting out, we're talking to people, we're seeing all these nice days we're having, we're getting out. I know I've personally got out and talked with lots and lots of people in Nelsonville and Buckville, talked to them about issues they have, and we're trying to address them immediately, and I think a lot of people see that we're, we're actually, their voices are being heard, and we're doing some things, and I think it's been pretty positive. So I just want to commend those guys and thank you guys for allowing them to come on board. As far as actual stats, I print it off because our, like I said, our mayor's court's down as far as our revenue, probably, I don't know what it is, forty-some percent. But like you said, the reason is, one, we've had a lot less officers this year, but we're averaging more proactivity per officer. We just haven't had the bodies as much this year. Plus, we have been given a lot more community service breaks, and not, people's not being fined to the extent last year, than it was last year. But just to illustrate, since May first of this year versus May first of last year, just so everybody can see, the one, this year, since May first up until the twenty-third, we've had a hundred and four citations for this month, basically in what, three and a half weeks? And then there's a breakdown between stop signs and seat belts. Driving under suspension continues to leave the pack. With twenty-three, we got ten with no license, and just don't have license, or never has had a license, so they're not even suspended. Unauthorized plates. We got, let's see, twenty-three, seventeen and six, twenty-three speed, seven assaults, two thefts, a few disorderly but in talks, drug paraphernalia, underage consumptions, things of that nature. So compared to last year during that same month, we had forty-five, so we've more than doubled it. But now that we're almost, we're only short one officer per staffing, I anticipate the work product will continue to be higher than what it was at this pace last year. I think last year our rates were, if I remember right, a fifty-seven percent increase over the previous years, and now we're doubling that fifty-seven percent increase, so that's a pretty exponential number. But I have been monitoring, we're still giving almost two-thirds, almost, two-thirds warnings versus citations, so, you know, nobody here wants to see Nelsonville turn into a ticket-riding speed trap. That's not our goal. Our goal is to make the streets safe. We're giving a lot more warnings than we are citations, but we've got a lot more people that's out there, that's actually enforcing the laws that we have. So I think it's combating that pretty well. If anything, sometimes we get some complaints that we're, we're not writing enough tickets, then we get complaints we're writing too many tickets, so I don't know. Some people we're just not going to be able to make happy, but I think all, and all the general public seems to be pretty pleased with the amount of unfortunate people we're going. We're primarily going very extremely high visibility, and that's where the two and a half officers, and that's not including myself. So on a given day, like, for, sometimes for twelve hours during the day, because I've been working a lot during the evenings, we've got four officers out at once. And that's encumbering overtime. We've got it scheduled where we're heavy from basically twelve to twelve, which is where the predominately of our calls are at. I think kind of a common sense approach, we want to stay heavy. We're having basically two guys on from six A to noon, and six, from midnight to six A, we got two guys out. So we're staying heavy on the predominant areas for visibility, for crime deterrent, for better response time. With that many officers, there's never, well, I shouldn't say never. There's virtually never a call where we have to wait. If somebody comes in, you, two guys can handle one call, so. There's a lot of things like that that's, that's going on that I, hopefully people take notice of. Everyone that we have on the department right now, again, I know we're, we're still short one officer, has been assigned to advanced training this year. Some of which I've got paid for through a grant, some of which is offered free training through the state, as well as every officer is required to take continuing professional training hours, kind of a career development. Everybody's mandated by the attorney general's office to do those. Everybody's ahead of course to get theirs completed. It's not due until December thirty-first, but we're all, most of the guys are almost done now, and we're not even halfway through the year. So that with additional training and the experience, I think, and again, we're going to just continue to produce better officers, and so a better sort of public. And that's all I have, sir.
All right.
Any questions for Chief Fitch?
So, do we, do we get an understudy on officer? Is he, is he in training, or? He's, he's actually working right now. He's actually working right this second, actually. He's working from noon to midnight, he'll be on train. I got the guys, some of the new guys being trained six hours, but one guy, six hours with another, because I like the, the variety that it offers them. Plus, it gets them to kind of be able to see Nelsonville, because it's, you know, eleven o'clock in the morning, Nelsonville's different than eleven o'clock at night.
Oh, that's for sure.
So it's kind of a crash course. He's going to be here for three weeks. This is week number two. His name's Troy Smith. Then he starts training with the Heater Canines. So Attila is still certified throughout the state, but now we just have to get Troy trained with Attila. But Attila's been going with the new trainer. He's been taking him down there, and they've been keeping him sharp, and they're very impressed with him. So they're very, you know, very impressed with him. Now we just got to get Troy trained up and get them certified individually and as a team with Attila.
Okay.
So that's a three-week training to get the, the handler. So he goes June sixth, so by the end of June, Troy should be out certifying, you know, with the narcotics and all that.
With Attila?
Yeah, with Attila.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So also with that partnership with Mr. Heater, he's, he boards for twenty dollars a day since we train there, so if there is ever a boarding issue or anything like that, it's, it's going to significantly save us what we was paying at boxer's bed and biscuits, I believe, at Belbre, which was about seventy-some dollars a night. So. So that's that. All right, anything else?
Because it's close to you.
No, Attila, as of last week, Attila's spent a month with me. I miss Attila.
I was going to say, he probably misses you.
Yeah, we had a good time, but, because I didn't want to teach him any bad habits, I wouldn't allow him to sleep in the bed with me, but apparently his new handler allows that, so, yeah, he's, he's loving life right now.
Sure.
Yeah. Troy's got a place out in the country, and him and Attila, I get lots of videos and updates, and he's brought him into the office and stuff, too, so it'll be, yeah, everything is going to, I'm really excited about the opportunity.
Awesome. Good deal.
I was going to ask of the six stop sign violations, how many of them were the offering coming up on JLE?
I don't know if any of them were. I'm not certain. That I don't know. I don't know. There may have been one.
They almost got my wife the other night, so, good for them. I wish they would have.
Oh, wow. Good luck to that officer.
She got one coming back through RACE the other night, coming from Southern.
I heard that. I heard that. Yes, I, I have an informant that told me that one.
Do you now?
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Off to the readings. Okay, we have, we need to make a motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-two.
Submit. Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
All right, we are on first reading of ordinance forty-two, I'm sorry, forty-four dash twenty-two. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance approving wastewater treatment plant Phase Two Change Order Two for Nelsonville Regional Collection System Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract Phase Two Wastewater Treatment Plant, whereas changes to the contract are recommended in order to complete the contract. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by thirty-one thousand five hundred fifty dollars and eighty-two cents, and is summarized as attached in Exhibit One. Now therefore, be interdaining by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves Change Order Two for the Phase Two Wastewater Treatment Plant Contract as described in Exhibit One. The contract price will be increased by a sum of thirty-one thousand five hundred fifty dollars and eighty-two cents. The change is necessary for modifications associated with relocating the CO2 generator pad. City manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into, accept, and/or authorize the change, the contract change order for Phase Two Wastewater Treatment Plant Contract as shown in Exhibit One. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. It will be enacted by council on first reading under suspension of rules the twenty-third day of May two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any council discussion on this matter?
This might be a foolish question, but what is Exhibit One?
Does it reference me?
It's in your email.
Oh, it was in the email, okay. So I read that, okay, I just wanted to make sure that's what that was, what that's referring to, okay.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, motion to suspend.
Submit. Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, motion to adopt?
Submit. I guess I'm the one, I think. Craig, I tried to get you to help me out there.
You want?
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
All right. We have ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I will. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. An ordinance approving Change Order Three for twenty twenty Water Systems Improvement Waterline Contract and authorizing city manager Scott Frank to sign and execute said contract Change Order and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into the contract twenty twenty Water System Improvement Waterline Contract, whereas several items of the contract needed adjusted in order to complete the contract. And whereas the change will increase the contract price by twenty-four thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, and is summarized as attached.
Thank you.
And ordinance approving change order three for water system improvement meters contract and authorizing city manager Scott Frank to sign and execute said contract change order and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract water system improvements metered, whereas several items in, of the contract needed adjusted in order to complete the contract, whereas several commercial meters need replacement, whereas commercial meters for replacement were, feel verified by size, condition, and priority for replacement. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by two hundred and five thousand two hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents, and is summarized as attached in exhibit one. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's fallas. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves change order three for the water system improvements meters contract as described in exhibit one. The contract price will be increased by a sum of two hundred five thousand two hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents. City manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into, accept, and/or authorize the contract change order for water system improvements meters contract as shown in exhibit one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised code seven-thirty-one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of May two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any council discussion on this matter? Okay. Motion to, motion to adopt? Or, sorry, motion to suspend?
Sub move. Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Sub move. Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Sub move. Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it. Thank you.
A resolution of authorization to apply for the Nature Works Grant. Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's all mine.
Here.
And ordinance accepting all donations for the dog park and thanking all donors for their generosity and raising number three hundred Parks and Recreation Fund by the donation amount, and creating a dog park expense line item and declaring an emergency. Whereas donors have donated funds to the city of Nelsonville for a dog park, whereas the city of Nelsonville would like to accept the donations from all donors and express sincere gratitude for their, their thoughtfulness, kindness, and generosity. Whereas the city desires to raise the number three hundred Parks and Recreation Fund by the amounts donated. Whereas the city desires to create an expense line titled Dog Park Expense that is contained in the number three hundred Parks and Recreation Fund. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's fallas. That city of Nelsonville accepts the generous donations from all donors for the dog park. The city auditor shall create a line item in the number three hundred Parks and Recreation Fund titled Dog Park Expense. The city auditor shall raise the number three hundred Parks and Recreation Fund Dog Park Expense Line Item by the total amounts donated. The clerk of council is directed to send a copy of this ordinance to all donors. The city of Nelsonville expresses their sincere gratitude to all donors, extreme thoughtfulness, kindness, and generosity. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised code seven-thirty-one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of May two thousand twenty-two.
Any council discussion on this matter? Motion to suspend?
Sub move. Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
All right. Resolution twenty-two seventy-two, need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it. Thank you.
A resolution of authorizations to apply for the Nature Works Grant. Whereas the state of Ohio, through the Department of Natural Resources, administers financial assistance for public recreation purposes through the state of Ohio Nature Works Grant Program, and whereas the city of Nelsonville desires financial assistance under Nature Works Grant Program. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. The city of Nelsonville approves a filing and application for Nature Works Grant Financial Assistance. Scott Frank, city manager, is hereby authorized to direct, and directed to file and execute an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and provide all information and documentation required to be eligible for possible financial assistance. The city of Nelsonville agrees to obligate the funds required to satisfactorily complete a proposed project and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Nature Works Grant Program. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, will enacted by council on first reading the twenty-third day of May two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any council discussion? All right, motion to adopt?
Sub move. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, last one. Resolution twenty-two seventy-three, need someone to introduce it, please.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. A resolution dedicating baseball field number two at the Nelsonville City Park to Mr. Hope Austin Woodson's memory for his hard work and dedication to the city's youth baseball and Nelsonville City Park. Whereas the city of Nelsonville would like to recognize Mr. Hope Austin Woodson for his countless hours spent taking care of the Nelsonville City Park and ensuring that the baseball fields were in the best condition for games. Whereas Mr. Woodson was passionate about the game of baseball and dedicated his life to coaching and teaching Nelsonville's youth the game. Whereas Mr. Woodson worked tirelessly at the Nelsonville City Park until itself would no longer permit him to. Whereas out of great respect, admiration, and appreciation of Mr. Hope Austin Woodson's hard work, thoughtfulness, selflessness, and generosity, the city of Nelsonville would like to dedicate baseball field number two at the Nelsonville City Park in memory of Mr. Woodson. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. The city of Nelsonville dedicates Nelsonville City Park Baseball Field Number Two to Mr. Hope Austin Woodson for his coaching, teaching, hard work, thoughtfulness, selflessness, and generosity to the youth, the youth baseball programs at Nelsonville for the duration of his life. Scott Frank, city manager, is hereby authorized and directed to take any steps necessary to make sure that field number two is dedicated to Mr. Woodson. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, will enacted by council, uh, on the twenty-third day of May two thousand twenty-two.
Any council discussion on this matter? Motion to adopt?
Sub move. Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Okay, city managers report. Great, Mr. Frank? More shorts.
So, for the dedication for Mr. Woodson, we weren't able to do it yesterday because the weather was supposed to be bad, and, uh, I don't remember at twelve o'clock if it was raining or not, but it was definitely wet down there. Uh, so we are going to do it June fifth at twelve o'clock, um, we have the sign ready to go to dedicate the field down there, uh, Mr. Woodson's daughter's coming into town, he has three nephews that live here locally, so we're expecting, uh, a fair amount of family to come in, and then also, uh, Ruby has all, uh, the plan to have all the players lined up down there on the field, so it should be a really nice, uh, display of honor and, um, good show up, so I'm really looking forward to it. I do not personally know, uh, Mr. Woodson, um, but I've heard lots of stories about him, wish I could have met him, so there's some pretty funny quotes out there, so I hope to hear some more, uh, when we get down there. Um, but that, uh, a transition to, I need a motion from council authorizing us to, uh, spend five thousand dollars to Pray the Hills. Would that work for you, Mr. Seffington? Council motion for the minutes?
Okay. A motion to donate five thousand dollars to the Pray the Hills organization?
I'll send it back.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All righty, thank you. Uh, update on the paving, so we were supposed to have all our paving done this week, which would have included, um, St. John Street, Clinton Street, and the little ramp at the end of Conner Street, but with the weather, we're only looking at Clinton Street right now, so Clinton Street should be paved on Friday, and, uh, again, that's weather pending, and, uh, St. John Street and that little ramp, um, has been rescheduled, uh, undetermined date right now. Mill Street has been redone, if you haven't been up there to check it out, go look at it, it looks many times better now, the curb down the, if you're going up the hill, the left-hand side has been completely cut out, redone, concrete looks professional now, so the third time was the charm, looks wonderful, and, um, uh, good to go there. If your yard has had work done in it by any of the, um, contractors for the different water projects, they are not done doing the, um, grass. So, uh, myself or Jason will personally inspect every yard before they are signed off, and I haven't inspected a single one yet, and I don't believe Jason has either. So I know that, uh, we get several calls a day about yards being left in disrepair, rocks being left in the yard. Um, I can tell you the biggest problem they're having is getting, uh, potsoil in, in vault because it's, uh, clumped together with all the rain. They're having a hard time getting it sifted. So that's been the biggest holdup. Pothole filling, the guys have been at it again since our last meeting. I believe they've put down another sixteen tons of asphalt to, you know, potholes, so they've been putting down a lot of asphalt this spring. Um, and it still continues. They should be almost done until the end of summer, just to touch up whatever they don't get, um. Now, the goal is to be done by the end of May with potholes till the end of summer. But, um, speaking of water lines, um, we met with bookdol officials this morning, uh, talked to them last week, uh, in preparation for a meeting we have Thursday. So, uh, if I could back up just a little bit about water lines, we submitted a project, if you guys recall, um, just a couple of months ago, the five point two million dollars, uh, request to EPA, where that included water lines up Port Street, uh, down Trashpole Road, uh, Franklin Street, um, a whole bunch of streets in town. There's a lot of water lines. So we should, EPA has till the end of this month to notify us. Well, that's this week. So we haven't been notified yet, but we should hear about that. Typically, that's a spring, uh, turn-in, spring notification. Well, EPA has also pushed that up, and they want our submission again for the next projects in August. So we are turning in our next submission, uh, in August. So what we're doing Thursday is preparing, going through our next list, and starting to stack them up of what we have and prioritizing, and then we'll set a utility meeting shortly after that. Uh, here's all of our lines, here's what our, what our wishlist is over in this setting and what that looks like going forward. And, uh, same goes for sewer, our next sewer list, which shouldn't be near as big, is also due beginning of August as well, which will include a couple of houses headed up toward jail. And, uh, we'll also look at, uh, there's going out the previous, um, projects that we had on the books. If you guys recall that we didn't fund last time, like going out towards Cenequane. Um, I don't think there's any sense in messing with Dunnville anymore. There's a couple other places along there, previous ones, but, so a utility meeting will be in order soon. So we should have lots of information coming up. But Bookdol did identify five transite lines, which I think should definitely be at the top of that list to get those out of the ground. And that should be the rest of the transite off our grid at that point, which, uh, would be really nice. Um, and they're coming to our meeting on Thursday as well, so that was very helpful. The sewer plant, we had another pump fail last Friday and, uh, had a bypass, so EPA is unhappy with us again. Uh, we've already sourced and, uh, purchased a new pump. It'll be here tomorrow. So the original pump that failed was a ten, uh, horsepower pump, four inch. We sourced a new six inch thirty horsepower pump, but it's not a permanent pump. We got one that's, uh, it's mobile in, in nature, so it's complete. It's a portable system is what I'm trying to say. So when the plant goes down, we still have our system that we take with us, and we can use it in flood scenarios. We can use it in another sewer emergency scenario. So it's not money that we're putting into a plant to knock down. It's something that we keep after we're done. So we'll be able to have it, uh, to use in other scenarios, so it's just not flush money. But, uh, it'll be here tomorrow. The electricians will stand by to hook it up. We'll be back up and running. So it's running now on a four-inch pump that's also mobile. For those who've been here, you probably remember, um, we purchased it uh, two years ago when the, when we had all the massive failures right behind Advanced Auto. We had the thirty-foot deep hole behind there, uh, catastrophic failure. We had to order that four-inch pump on the fly. It's the exact same kind of pump, only a six-inch, so, and, um, we're back up and running, so. That's coming, and we used ARPA money for that, so, um, good use of those funds. And then, uh, let's see. The pool. So everybody has been asking about the pool tomorrow. Tomorrow's Tuesday, so tomorrow, Wednesday, and Friday is the pool repairs. So I do not know how long after the final repair on Friday before I can put water in it. So we won't know until they're done with the repair, and they'll let us know. So that is the biggest holdup before we can put water in it. And then after we get water in it, we just gotta stabilize the chemicals. Adam has already, um, started hiring, uh, guards, and he, um, almost has training secured. I don't want to say a hundred percent, but it's about ninety-five percent secured with OU. So to get, after we get all of our guards on the books, um, possibly by this weekend or the first part of next week, get them through training. And ideally, training and the water is stabilized right around the same time, mid-next week, uh, in next week, worst-case scenario. And then, uh, I really, 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 really want that pool open by Friday at the very latest of next week or before. Okay. So, uh,
Really?
You'll probably see, probably see a temper tantrum.
Oh, no.
Yes, the hell we need.
You went to that public or?
Yes.
Sell tickets or?
Yes, there'll be a Lord of the Five quad. All my fans out there, my favorite, this is for you, Greg. And, uh, so.
Shout out.
Yeah. Uh, everything, everything's on tap, and it's only a big thing to get the repair. I don't know how long it needs to cure before we can put water on it. So, um, they'll be digging it out pretty deep because it's a structural repair. I just don't have any clue how far down they're going. And then if it rains on top of it, they say they can repair it with the rain happening. But again, I have no idea what that does to cure times, so. Oh, also, uh, why, I forgot to have the, this. So the same company can also replace the liner, so I'm gonna get a three-phase quote while they're here.
Yes.
And break it up into three different phases so we can have real numbers to plan.
Yes.
The, uh, liner repair as well, so it'd be great. We can go from there on that.
If you are, and everything.
They're not here. They were supposed to be here last week, and, oh, they're not. Like those, like those Dodge parts.
Right. Did you go from the dealership?
No. So.
I went there.
You did. Anyways, that's all I have. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Appreciate, appreciate the information.
All right, we're to the good of the order. Mr. Clement?
Uh, the only thing I know, everybody have a safe, memorial weekend, and if you're traveling, uh, have their extra money for their outrageous gas.
Yes. Amen. Mr. Nick Smith?
Yeah, so I'm gonna be out of town, so I can't go to this thing I'm gonna talk about, but this is downtown revitalization workshop that's being hosted by Buckeye Hills, uh, Regional. Um, that's on Tuesday, May thirty-first at five at the Opera House. Uh, it sounds cool. I think you have to register ahead of time online. Um, so I'd love to be there, but I can't, and, uh, anybody goes, I'd love to hear about it.
All right.
I'm registered. Also, Scott, you're registered if you want to go.
Okay. It's Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
No, next week.
Next week. Oh, good. Mr. Booth?
Uh, just wanted to remind everyone that, uh, we do have an open council seat. We are taking letters of interest, so, uh, everyone out there that has all the great ideas, uh, please feel free to, uh, bring them in and share them with us.
Thank you, Tater.
Mr. Sherman?
So, um, good news on our camper event coming up, June eighteenth. Uh, we have right now twenty campers signed up. Hope to maybe get thirty.
Nice.
Just pay attention to that. As long as it is once. So, um, we've got a bunch of, uh, food vendors and also scrap vendors set up for sidewalks. We do have alumni people coming into town this week and possibly next week, so we appreciate if people get out there and mow their grass. I've seen some knee-high grass and waist-high. So let's get our town cleaned up, so the visiting people that are coming back here will say, hey, this place turned really good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
God bless America.
All right, um, I'd just like to say thanks to, um, all the, uh, street workers. Um, utilities as a combined, I saw them out there patching Canal Street. The, uh, city as a whole is looking better and better and better. Thanks for the police and the fire department. Of course, they do their jobs. Mr. Frank, appreciate your job that you do. Mr. Sappington, same with you. And of course, last but not least, our esteemed clerk, Susan Harmony. Thank you for the job you do. We appreciate it. So, and not you, Dan. Not you.
Wish I know.
No, no, Dan. So, all right, with that, motion to adjourn?
Sub move. Second.
And Mr. Toy, thank you for Mr. Toy, too.
I don't know where I am. Somebody's saying Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.